Hi, everyone. It is time. The time is six oh five. I would like to call the Human Relations Commission meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Legions. Let's do roll call. Chair Dila Weeks-Morris. Vice Chair Demetra Stahl-Nash.
Here.
Nona Cohen-Bowman.
Here.
Morgan Hannigan. Melvin Jones.
Here.
Courtney Davis.
Present.
And Marissa Sarafino. Report of the chairperson and members of the committee board. Report from the secretary. There are four terms that expired on June 30th, 2025. Interviews to fill those vacancies were held this past Monday, July 21st. City Clerk Dawn Abramson will send out communication as to the next steps of the recruitment process. Report from Councilmember Matulik liaison to the commission.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to see everyone tonight. So as the secretary reported, we did have interviews for the vacant positions, those that may be churning out. And we are, right now, the current schedule is August 5th. We are looking to make those appointments. So please stay tuned for that. As far as the other reports that I have, I just want to share that on July 12th, I believe that was, I had the honor to throw out the first pitch at the Vallejo Seaweed's baseball game. And that's one of the honors that, as an elected fish, I was able to get invited to. And speaking with Mark Albert, who was the coordinator for the Vallejo Seaweed's, it sounds like they're looking for any other electeds and other members of the community that are part of civic engagement such as this. So I would like to propose to him to have members from the commission, or maybe the whole commission itself, to show up and present themselves. So the community can see the great work that you guys do and just to be acknowledged for all of the engagement as a commission and individuals that every one of you do on a commission. And then also, for those that weren't aware, this past Saturday, July 19th, over at the King's Market along Fairgrounds Drive, we actually had a, what was called the Crest Side, Country Club Crest Side cleanup. And so we gathered together as a community. It was organized by Supervisor James, the mayor's source. Councilmember Ledigian and myself to bring the community together. We had, and those businesses in that specific area that had been hit by recent gun violence and incidents that have been happening over there, and we wanted to bring attention to that area. Basically, sharing with the community that you are not neglected. We have not forgotten about you as a city and as a county. And so we held a cleanup in that area. We actually coordinated with the city and with recolage and have five dumpsters out there. And then we had people from the local area to bring by. And we filled up four of the five dumpsters completely full that day. So it was a very successful cleanup. We had organizations such as Apostle Summers and his Healthy Vallejo Crew, part of the cleanup, along with Melvin Jones in Orlando with Empowerment Boys and Girls Club with that. And so that was one of the great successes we've recently had over there. And for those that may have missed yesterday's council meeting, we had the Economic Development Commission come present in front of us. And what they did, they actually were presenting in front of us to ask for more money based on the work plan they put together. And I know I've come before this commission and other commissions and boards that I'm the liaison to, to remind the commission that you do have a $1,000 allocation for the commission to identify what, some of the things that you as a commission wanted to do, some of the goals. And I would recommend reviewing the council meeting yesterday to see how the Economic Development Commission did. So they actually already had it allocated. They came in front of the city council a while ago and presented and got over $10,000 based on what their work plan is. And they came in front of us again yesterday requesting another $7,000 for that. And we, as a council, looking at their work plan and seeing the breakdown of what they were using to justify what they were, for their visions and goals in their work plan, we, as a council, approved that amount. So I'm looking to this commission to kind of start brainstorming of looking at some of the goals that you would like to do as a commission, getting out to the community, making take, participating in some trainings, and do that research and put that work plan together. And request, especially if it goes beyond the $1,000, and see, and work with staff to see how that may move forward and move a lot of the goals and visions that you as a commission may want to pursue, whether it's getting out to the community, educating the public. I know Commissioner Sarafino, she has a personal goal to help educate about a lot of the opioid addictions that are out there. So those are kind of things that I'm encouraging and hoping that you as a commission can kind of have those conversations and look to do a lot of the great work and get it out to the community and educate Vallejoans about a lot of the great work you do. So Vice Chair Demetra Stahl-Nash, that is the end of my report. So thank you.
Can I ask you a question about the $1,000 for workshops? Because I'm really interested in doing mental illness training with the homeless for the police and fire and those who serve them. Is that a possibility for us to all work together?
I think that's a great opportunity there. And I mean, the fact you're talking something simple is that, that actually may be a free, it may not even be any cost impact to that because we can potentially, and this is looking to staff to potentially help coordinate this with the iHeart program. That may be the start of where we're looking at mental health to where they can connect with some of the maybe organizations that they may work with or individuals within the iHeart team itself that could talk to some of those aspects of it. And then, once again, that may be conversations. And then from those conversations, that may lead to other conversations of potential trainings that may be impacted with, may have a financial impact. So those is where I'm trying to encourage, not only this commission, but all commissions and boards to start those conversations with the staff and to figure out and identify where are some of the places you guys can reach out to and grow as a commission and identify and get the word out for a lot of things that you as a commission may be wanting to do. But this starts with you as a commission, talking amongst yourself to figure out what are some of the goals and aspirations you may have and using the work plan as the template of how to give you a roadmap of how to get that moving forward. And this is, once again, encouraging yourself, the commission, to work with staff to help move that forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a comment. I'm graduating with the Citizens Academy this evening. So if I leave a little early, just so you're aware, because I guess the graduation, it's classes right now, but graduation's in about 20 minutes, I guess, 30 minutes. So please don't mind me if I have to. So anything I have to report, just if I could do it before then? Thank you.
And my apologies, that was part of, should have been part of my report, that I actually attended the Citizens Academy last Wednesday. I did a presentation and sat through that training. And once again, wanted to congratulate Commissioner Sarafino for the graduation that is occurring tonight. So thank you for reminding me of that slight omission I had from my council member report. So thank you.
Do you want to report on the navigation opening?
Oh, yes, thank you. The fact that that was a while ago, yes. So I would be happy to. So I can't remember the date right off the top of my head, but there was a ribbon cutting ceremony and a grand opening for the Navigation Center along Broadway. And it was a, there was probably close to at least over 100 people that attended that were able to get a, take a tour of the Navigation Center. And it's a beauty, for those that have not been there, it is a beautiful facility. And it is, and it's actually open right now. And it's actually got some, let's put, some tenants, let's put it over, that are already over there. It's got its security already set up. So for those that may, that would like potentially a tour, if you haven't seen that one, I would ask that you coordinate with the staff to see if that's something that they may be able to arrange. Because we, as councilmembers, we were able to get a personal tour. And so as a commission, which something like the Navigation Center and maybe the Broadway project is coming up, that would typically fall under your purview as a human relations commission. So that's a great idea and an opportunity to be with that being under your umbrella of, once again, sharing a lot of the great work that you as a commission would have some participation and engagement in.
Thank you for actually just mentioning that. Considering that on the agenda we are going to look at, there's an action I am with regards to creating a subcommittee that is a focus around the information around homelessness. And so I do agree that a tour on a tour of the facility will be awesome. Also, as well as understanding the process on how individuals get access to the shelter is important. And capturing the process through their lens, as far as like that falls under, I would think, under our preview as well. And seeing what challenges they're having to navigate while they're either go through that process or they're in the shelter. And then understanding, because I think the shelter, how many beds does it serve? Is it 25?
At the Navigation Center, it's got 147.
147 beds? And by any chance, do we know how many of those beds are currently occupied? Or maybe a percentage?
I believe some of them are, from my understanding, some of them are occupied. And these are, once again, these are occupants that have gone through the vetting process through iHeart and through the Resource Connect referral program that a lot of the unhoused have already gone through and other individuals and have been vetted for already. So I would ask that you check with staff or check with iHeart of that process. And Natalie Peterson would probably be the person to best contact of the specifics of the breakdown of the current amenities that are actually occurring over at a Navigation Center.
Okay, so that I'm hearing correctly. Resource Connect, iHeart, is there another entity that is? No, not Natalie Peterson, not with the city, but I'm talking about, is there another agency that is, I guess, the operator of the facility? Or is that Resource Connect?
No, it's not Resource Connect. I forgot the name of the operator off the top of my head right now. But Natalie would be the person that would be able to help you with that answer of who the contact person may be for that one. And if, and through the vice chair, one of the other things I forgot to mention during my liaison report was, for those that may not be familiar, Carolyn's House, which is a women's sober facility, just opened up in District 5. We actually had a grand opening with that, I think that was last week. And so Councilmember Paul Maris, myself, and Councilmember Brigenter, who's, that is the district, and Councilmember Brigenter's district that this facility is in. And it just opened up. It has a space for seven tenants. And so it was a beautiful renovation of an existing house over there. And the fact that it was a private partnership, public-private partnership to get this thing opened, these are their type of positive engagement. And a lot of the great work that our community is doing that, once again, in my mind, would fall under the umbrella of the Human Relations Commission that, and which reminds me that if I get invitations like this, I should be sending these out to the, these invitations out to the Human Relations Commission to engage in these opportunities so that you can participate in a lot of these great opportunities that are actually happening amongst, within our city.
Through the chair, the operator's name is Five Keys.
So would now be the time that I'd say that I have a report?
Yes.
Okay, I have a report.
Commissioner reports.
Hello. So sorry, it's a couple of minutes late. So a couple of things I wanted to touch on. So I spoke at the Board of Supervisors meeting, not the one they just had the day before yesterday, but I spoke at the, and Matulik, City Councilmember Matulik was there, rest of the city council. I was told by Orlando the night before that they needed support to get the sheriffs to back, you know, they're trying to get them to vote on the sheriffs. And I did wear my Human Relations Commission, but I told them that I was not there representing the Human Relations Commission. But all those sheriffs, being that I used to be on the other side, I wanted them to see that. I said, like, I've got a name tag too now, you know? But I cried like a little baby the whole time I spoke. But it was very interesting to hear that, not that that's under our umbrella, but I just wanted just you guys to be aware that I did speak at that meeting. They ended pushing it off. But it looks like as of January, the sheriffs for sure, like 90% sure, will be coming in to help Vallejo Police Department. But I will say, so I attend the Citizens Academy. And I will say that when the Housing Department came to speak, I have my own personal thing going on with them. So, and not like it was bad or good, but you know, we've been exchanging emails. And one thing that I learned is that they get their Section 8 vouchers through HUD. They're allowed, from what I believe, it was 2,247 vouchers is what HUD allocates for the city of Vallejo. We are only utilizing 1,600 and, I don't know the exact number. 1,600 and, I don't know approximately, let's just say 1,638 approximately. So immediately, I was, did the math, and I was a little blown away because that would be almost, what, 700, 800 vouchers that aren't being utilized. So we asked in the Citizens Academy, why is that? And they said, either the landlord situation, they said, because they don't have the manpower to do the, all the paperwork. Enough paper, right, this is what was said, and it was said in the academy, I mean, in the class, and I know it gets, but I was, I had to walk out because I was just so blown away by the fact that that's such a large number of vouchers that are not being used. And that could put such, and I understand it's between having enough landlords, having the paperwork, and I totally get that, they probably are really, really busy. But I know that there's plenty of us, people that would, that work in the homeless, volunteer in the homeless industry, that would volunteer to help do that, you know? And I'm sure there's some type of legal things behind that. But I just couldn't believe that there's that many vouchers that aren't being used. And I'm pretty almost sure that I'm not misspeaking because I made sure, I went back up and I asked a couple of, like, was I just? But a couple of people in the meeting were a little like blown away by the fact that there's, we're allowed so many and that that's the only amount that are being used right now. And that could put such a big dent, even just half of that or a quarter of that could put a big dent in the homeless situation. And so that might be something we might really need to look into. We could, now, if we did ever, for whatever reason, I guess HUD is, is it HUD that is in charge of the Housing Department? I understand that the city manager is who, because in the Citizens Academy, I figured out how it works, you know? But I guess HUD is who funds the housing vouchers, am I correct?
It's a little bit complicated. So the Housing Authority is sort of its own thing, but the city council is the governing body for that.
So Ms. Hayes, is it Ms. Hayes? She's, she's like, it falls under her umbrella, correct? But she, and the city manager, but Ms. Jones is the, in charge of housing?
You know, I actually, I don't know who's over in Housing at the moment. Is it Alicia Jones?
Yeah, I only know because of the emails. So just for personal experience, just, I just want to give you guys. So I turned in my Section 8 paperwork at 4:45 PM. It was due by 5:00 on October 18th. I was told that my housing, that my paperwork was turned in late and that it was not turned in until October 22nd or 21st, which my mom then said, wait a minute, I took her there. And, you know, and my mom wrote an email and they said, I'm sorry, you will not be on the list, that you have to wait until the next go-around. And so that's where we've been exchanging emails because I was like, I'll find cameras, I'll pull cameras, or, you know, because I was just so upset that, I know it was last minute, but 4:45, if it's till 5, it's until 5, you know? And so it was just a little discouraging and it broke my spirit just a little bit at the moment. But I'm not going to give up. And I just, and I'm just speaking that on my own personal experience. And nothing against Alicia, and Ms. Gillian was great with helping getting me, you know, in touch with them. After I spoke with Alicia, then someone else emailed me, so there was five of us in the email. So I got to know them. And it's just, I feel really bad because I don't know how many other people are in my same situation, you know? And I did everything I could to get that paperwork in by 4:45. But, so, you know, I'm not going to be discouraged. I just want people to understand that this is, this is what people with the lived experience are dealing with out here, you know? And so I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. Hold on, I wrote my notes too. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to speak on and just raise that as another effort around what the commission can support its education around, where we are meeting with folks who are having those types of challenges, understanding and educating them around the process, making sure they have all their ducks aligned so that they're not showing up at 4:45 or at 5 o'clock or missing the deadline entirely, in which they would have to wait for the next round of Oakland applications to be done. to be done. And so I think that is another area, again, where we're, we're talking about housing, or, or our unhoused population, some way, somehow, we can factor in, maybe that might be an effort, and Vice Chair, you can.
I, I think that's a great idea, but the sad part of it is, she was there by the deadline, and she got, she got turned down. How does that work? That's a problem, that's a very serious problem. So we have to do better, I don't know how we, who we can communicate with, but if they need the help, I mean, that's 700 people that can't, that are probably outside, because they don't have a voucher. I mean, rent is astronomical now, I mean, we have people living in their cars, we have people struggling, and if we have a unit that is closing down before the deadline, that's a problem. So I don't know, as a commission, how can we work with them to help them maybe not be able to turn somebody down that was there by the deadline? How does that work?
Well, it is a little bit hard to get into that without stepping outside your purview. I mean, the, the city problems of having enough workers, housing is very, very technical, so you need qualified workers to do those things, but I think it starts with information gathering, as we've talked about before, going and figuring out what are the causes, what are the needs, and then the education piece is critical, that's something that's squarely within your mandate. And so if you notice in gathering the information, that there's a gap there, that people don't understand the process, or they're not able to get there soon enough, or to find the resources they need to complete the paperwork, that education piece would be something that you absolutely could do to help.
And I will say that Ms. Hayes was very helpful with just getting me connected, you know, as quick as, as quick as possible, you know, after the last time I spoke at one of the meetings about it. So she could also be someone that, I mean, she, she emailed me back pretty quickly.
Did you maybe first couple of weeks?
Yeah, right. One other thing I wanted to.
If I, if I might, excuse me.
But I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had a quick question. I'm wondering, since if you're struggling, and you struggled with that, is it possible for us to get them to come talk to us and show us on paper their process and procedures? Because if we're out talking to people, and people have the need, we need to be able to know for sure, and not just tell them, you need to go down here, this is the address, and this is the time, but we need to know what their process and procedures are, so that people don't get caught up like you, you know, like you did. And if we don't know that, then we can't help anybody, you know, get off. So perhaps we can schedule them to come talk to us, and they must have something, or some information that has what you need to do, what you need to have, and this what it looks like. You know, I don't care whether or not they have enough, enough employees or not, if it's on paperwork, that does a lot of your work for you in trying to get the information across, so I'm just wondering if that's.
I will say that in the Citizens Academy, when I took that, when it came to the housing, they, not only do they have a, they come up with a, like, you know, a PowerPoint presentation, but they also give us, like, you know, printed, they give us the printed version, and they do, they are, they are pretty technical, I mean, they pretty much break it down, how their housing department works. One thing I did find out about housing is there's so many different, there's the housing, like, there's like, different branch, there's like, the Section Eight is the housing vouchers, then there's a different, you know, like, for domestic violence, or like, a different one for, with the families that are trying to get on their feet, there's different programs, so, but from what I got from it, the main thing is that HUD would be, if you had to complain about, let's just say, our housing department, HUD would be who we would do that with, am I correct? Like, if we had, like, let's say we had a formal complaint.
Isn't HUD the federal government? So that's the other part, why, so who are you complaining to?
Right, right.
That's useless to complain to HUD, and if they're referring you to HUD, then that's a waste of time and energy for someone who's in need and needs a place to be housed, does that make sense?
Yes.
I think just, in essence of what you were just saying, Councilmember, I mean, Commissioner, as, as Commissioner is over here saying that there's so many different buckets that, that folks are having to navigate, again, landing a conversation, understanding what those challenges are for the people who are in, who are directly impacted with housing, to assess, okay, where do we want to start our learning, right? And then bring it forward to break it down, right? Because it's going to be too much, it's going to be too much if we're trying to learn this entire system, and then trying to figure out, okay, well, you got this, you got that. It may, it may be that we have the, the individuals or the families who are impacted by domestic violence, or it may be the families who are directly impacted by losing Section Eight vouchers, or, or just Section Eight housing, and just learning how those individual buckets or systems operate, and what their processes are, and then bringing in the conversation with the folks who are directly impacted with those particular systems. Does that make sense?
It does, we're getting a little bit far afield of Commissioner reports, and starting to get into.
Sorry.
It's a great discussion, but more of an action calendar discussion, and perhaps the ad hoc committee, when we get to that, more of what they can do, but I want to make sure we get through the Commissioner reports, and then shut down.
Other than that, I think that, I think that's pretty much what I've, I'm trying to remember if I got everything. I will say, I did learn a lot, as far as with the Citizens Academy, the Risk Management Office, that was a cool, I didn't even know that they existed, and that's what I like to do for a living, so that's like safety, like, but they're, they were awesome. The Water Department, I had no idea how huge our Water Department is, like, and what a big deal it is. So I just suggest that if you guys ever can, I mean, maybe try doing the Citizens Academy, or even just watching it, or get the little pamphlets or something, but it's, it is quite, it's been quite interesting, you know? Then, you know, the firemen, those are always great, so.
What's the difference between Leadership Vallejo and Citizens Academy?
So, I'm afraid I don't know what Leadership Vallejo is. The Citizens Academy is a program put on by the city to educate the public on different departments and functions within the city, and what they do. So in the Citizens Academy, different departments come forward and give a presentation, the City Attorney's Office did one, we got up and talked about what our function is, what our parameters are, what we do on a day-to-day basis, and then same thing with the other departments.
Okay.
And I can speak to Leadership Vallejo. Leadership Vallejo is a nonprofit that works with the local agency to do monthly classes and educate students who have signed up for that program. And each month is a different theme, one month they'll do Government Day, where they come and they speak to the different department heads, and learn a little bit about how city government works, in, in like, a few hours, essentially.
So basically, the Citizens Academy is more localized versus leadership of, Leadership Vallejo, you know, you have folks from the state, State Assembly, Assemblywoman's Office, you have different layers beyond the city governance that are coming in to speak to. Okay. Thank you.
And I just had one more suggestion, sorry. Well, and, and I learned what a big job that this gentleman over here has with the technical, doing all this media, and, yeah, I didn't realize, I thought you just pushed a couple buttons, but he actually has a lot more, he has a lot more to do. I was like, he's just the sound guy, you know, teaching, but I will say, I, I think another suggestion is maybe having Ms. James come in, and maybe one of the times, during one of our meetings, Ms. Cassandra James, to speak, I mean, just to, because I've gotten to know her a little bit, but just to, for her to get to know us as a commission, maybe that would be a suggestion. It's just.
And also, just a reminder, if the commissioners have topics that they'd like to add to future agenda items, you can also email those to your secretary ahead of the meeting, and we'll go ahead and tack it on to the end.
Reports?
I will just report on this, sorry, I had to think about it for a second. So I will mention that last, I think it was last week, we had Councilmember Palmerez, as well as Chief Taw, come to District Four to discuss the prostitution that is happening in that area. I had mentioned at the previous council meeting that I had an incident with one of the individuals while walking to my office, and, which is located on Marin Street, and which resulted in calling an 911 because of a threat of violence that had occurred when my children were present. This is a constant conversation that this community continues to engage in, and so we had a conversation, we, there were some residents, business owners, that came and just spoke of what their engagements had looked like, and what has been, what has been happening. There have been, people have mentioned that the, the, the interactions have become more brazen, and in which, you know, all hours of the night, there's some, there's, there's movement there that should not be occurring. And so we, we had that conversation this past week, with regards to what are some of the solutions that the community can engage in, in order to do their part in addressing the, the challenges in, within the area, while maintaining safety. And so I'll just, I'll mention that. I think that is it. I know later on, there's a conversation around the first response transformation, and so I can give a little background on what were some of those findings, in regards to what community had engaged in during that time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item five.
Wait, I have a report. Sorry, sorry. So my navigation report, I mean, my navigation report, my report is on the Navigation Center, it was wonderful, and I think the best part about it was that animals were allowed, right? Because as most of us who've worked with homeless, that's all they have, that's their loved one, that's their baby, so I really would like to set up a tour, I think that would be awesome for us. I unfortunately wasn't able to tour, because I had a funeral to go to right after, so I'm hoping that we can set something up and go. And then we also had, out in front of City Hall, we had a memorial for all the homeless that have passed, and I think we were up to 50. And, you know, that's a really sad number, for that many homeless people to pass away and die. I didn't see a city presence there, and I want to talk with Dionne on how we can get, like, a message to City Council, or to the, because you can't just do Facebook and think everybody sees it, right? I mean, not everybody's going to see everything, so I think we need to do a better job to have city rep, Cassandra James was there, but she was the only one that I recognized and seen, and we did a bell for each and every one that was, has passed away. And of course, you know, we did have one that was killed, because they were bulldozed, and I think the conversation's sensitive, but we just need better communication within our system to be sensitive to these people that are vulnerable, and a lot of them have mental illness, and I think that iHeart is something that I would like to see them come here and do a presentation. So it's really important for us to be sensitive, that's really what Human Relations Commissioners are about, really, is, because, you know, it talks about, you know, being discriminative, and I really see that some homeless are being discriminated against, and it's sad, because some of them really don't know what they're doing, and I think we can do better as a commission, and learn more about it in the future. Thank you.
Just, just a quick comment, I, I am in the Citizens Academy with someone from iHeart, she, I forget her name right now, but she, yeah, she's a real sweet lady, but she, I can ask her, I can ask her to, like, I've gotten her card and stuff, but I can ask her, right, yes, agendize to agendize. I gotta go.
Okay, moving on to the community forum, do we have any speakers?
Through the chair, yes, we do have one in-person speaker, Jose Carisales, please come to the podium.
I just wanted to, Jose Carisales, I just wanted to touch a couple of points that I originally wasn't going to speak on the community forum, but I wanted to touch on a couple of points. I have not heard of 147 individuals with the navigation, I've heard of 137. Resource Connect is the referral process, it goes through the HMIS, HMIS is Housing Management Information System, providers are able to access that, and they can see who's, who is eligible for referral. There's this term called Doc Ready, some of them may be Doc Ready, some of them may not be doing their very, DeAndre Richard is doing his very best to make sure that Vallejo residents are at the top of the line, so to speak. But in, in my opinion, homeless person, unsheltered person is unsheltered person, they all, we all need housing. But there's a lot of mindset that, oh, it has to be only Vallejo residents, so, but unsheltered person is an unsheltered person, they have earned the right to be housed. iHeart, from what I have heard, from my unsheltered friends out, and when I visit them and talk to them, iHeart just does minimal services. They were supposed to help with the cleanup at the library, they did very minimal, they didn't do a lot, hopefully they're able to step up their game, so to speak, I'm encouraged by them. I spoke with my gentleman, my friend last night, he mentioned to me that there's possibly 18 people at the Navigation Center, maybe today there's 20, a few more may have, were allowed to enter. And the grand, the, June 23rd was the grand opening, a Monday, I think it was at 11:00 in the morning. And there was a mention about the prostitution, and I'm, I'm sorry to hear that experiences with you, I understand that the city council put on their agenda, possibly, an item for creating a municipal code for prostitution, and I have to, I just read it very quickly, I skimmed through it very quickly, but I'm thinking that's what's on there, maybe that'll help with that, although I personally feel that it's, it's going to be difficult to legislate morality, that's a very fine line, but that's the theme of Vallejo now, you know, do something about it, so what do people do? They try to create laws, just like they try to create laws for my unsheltered friends. It mostly, you know, how do you legislate morality, really? How do you do it? You got to figure out other ways than to use the laws to, to try and solve an issue, so to speak. Then you'll get to see me one more time, I'm not done. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other speakers at this time, Chair.
Thank you, Manny. Okay, item number six, consent calendar and approval of agenda, approval of minutes from the April 23rd, 2025 regular meeting, can we make a motion?
A motion to accept the minutes, Ezra.
Can we take a roll call vote?
I second.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. She's actually going to do it by roll call, so she'll ask for each person, thank you.
Vice Chair Stahl Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Nona Cohen Bowman?
Aye.
Commissioner Melvin Jones?
Aye.
And Commissioner Courtney Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, with Dela Morris absent, Morgan Hannigan absent, and Marissa Sarah. Morgan Hannigan absent, and Marissa Sarafino absent. Item seven, action calendar. 7A, creation of subcommittee to gather and present detailed information about homelessness and the groups working to address it in Vallejo.
So if the commission recalls, this was something that you had voted to discuss and potentially do at the last meeting was create a ad hoc subcommittee to go and gather some additional information on homelessness and the groups working to address it, to bring back to the group, to have a greater discussion on what could be done. And I think there were two individuals who were semi-nominated to be on that ad hoc subcommittee. So Sarafino was one, and then, do you remember the other? So this is an action item for your discussion of whether or not to create that ad hoc committee? And if so, who would be on it? Secretary sold me, it's you and Sarafino, yeah.
It's usually me, but it's all good. So how to, so are we just able to get together and get the information and then bring it back at the next meeting? Is that it?
Yeah, so I think the idea was to create a, an ad hoc small committee. It has to be, you know, less than a quorum, so three or fewer of you to go and do that task. And you would be able to meet together outside of this public meeting context because you're a, a less than a quorum. You can have three, if you would like.
We can have three? I'm so excited.
And then, yes, go and accomplish that purpose and bring it back.
Okay. Is it established that it was Sarafino, myself, and then we can pick one more?
No, this is on for discussion of,
At the end, okay.
Well, for discussion right now and action. So if you would like to now create it, decide who's going to be in it.
Well, it's kind of hard because now I'm going to be going off if they don't choose me, which I don't want to be. August 5th will know. So, I mean, I can still help, right? I mean, I can still give them the information. I don't have a problem with that. So, but I would like a third person to join in. Anybody who wants to?
Yeah, I'll join in with you.
Yay, all right. Yeah, he said that they had a few interviews, so we might not be back. So it's okay. I'll still help, I don't mind.
So you could create a committee today. You could also vote to just continue this to the next meeting and discuss and address it.
Okay, so I'd like to create the committee today with Sarafino, myself, and Mel. And hopefully, we will get together and we can all talk. I'm so excited about that. And bring back information to the third, and so we'll set up, yes. So we'll set up a meeting.
I took that to be a motion to create the ad hoc committee consisting of those three individuals.
Yes, I make a motion to create the ad hoc.
Through the chair, we do have a public comment on this item. We, we have public comment on this item. Yeah. Yeah. Joey C.
Manny's been on me all day, I tell you. I see him on the road, he doesn't even wave at me. I, I even delivered to his house, he doesn't even acknowledge that. Manny, was that you? In your underwear?
I'm with your car.
Jose Carisales, thank you for the second opportunity. And I want to acknowledge Committee Member Sarafino. I was there at the meeting of the sheriffs when they were Salano County. I spoken in favor. And she gave a very impactful statement in support of the sheriff's involvement in, in the city of Vallejo. I just wanted to speak on the creation of a subcommittee. I, I wanted to encourage this committee to really think about involving those with lived expertise, those with lived experience in this process. I thought I had five minutes, but I'm sorry. Studies show that programs designed with input from individuals experiencing homelessness tend to be more effective in addressing their needs. As an example, United States Interagency Council on Homelessness made consulting people with lived experience a priority. Directly consulting with people who have lived experience with homelessness is vital to ending chronic homelessness. They also decided that every organization, organization can and must ensure that people with lived experience, past or present, are engaged in, in decision-making from how programs are run to what to advocate for. They also decided elevate the view of people with lived experience. Speakers with lived experience of homelessness share their stories and offered solutions to end homelessness. Hearing the story of an unsheltered person gives value to what they've experienced. A lot don't know, I don't necessarily agree with the concept of you have to walk in, walk in the shoes. I, I don't want anybody to live the two years that I did at the library. But I, I want you to hear our story so that you can use your own life experience, your own education, your own parental guidance through your life to make a common sense decision. We are a piece of the puzzle. To fill that puzzle, we should be a part of that. I really thought I had five minutes, guys. In, in the UK, there was an organization called World Habitat, the importance of lived experience. People with lived experience of homelessness bring invaluable insights and perspectives that can significantly, significantly improve service delivery. The bottom line, who better to discuss this issue than those who lived it? If I may, just an additional 30 seconds, if I may, please. I've, two and a half, this is the third year. I've had four, sorry, heart surgery, four quadruple, a quadruple heart surgery, four new arteries in my heart. Two, this year will be third, three years ago. My point is, I don't go see an orthopedic surgeon to discuss my issues. I go to my heart doctor in the, in the, at Kaiser. So when this discussion is, is, involves a homeless issue, why not involve those with lived expertise? I've been doing this work for 10 years. Why not? You cannot complete a puzzle with a missing piece. How do you do it? You can't. So I think, thinking outside the box, adding a new perspective to this puzzle and allow those with lived expertise to be, have a seat at the table, so to speak, and hear us. And I'll finish, and thank you for the extra time. Who better? If you don't talk to us, you won't hear us. And I'm a firm believer in that, in that saying. And I just got that, I stole that from one of my unsheltered friends at a meeting about three weeks ago. Thank you for the extra time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And we will be calling you. Don't think we won't.
Please do.
We will.
I beg you.
You're on my first of my list. Thank you for your compassion for our announced friends.
No other speakers at this time.
So we have, so does somebody want to second the motion to create the ad hoc committee?
Second, second item motion?
Okay, yes, vote by roll call. Vice Chair Stahl Nash? Commissioner Nona Cohen-Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Melvin Jones?
Yes.
And Commissioner Courtney Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously with Deila Morris absent, Morgan Hannigan absent, and Marissa Sarafino absent. Action item B, discussion of ways the commission could have intentional contacts and conversations with the community to inform them of the commission's purpose and existence, including regular presence at events or action that may be taken by individual commissioners.
I believe this was an item that I raised at a last, at our last commission meeting in regards to, you know, presenting ourselves in front of, of the community. What I, what I've been hearing and, and what residents have been coming to me with is saying, what does HRC do? Who is, who exactly, you know, is on the commission? And how can this commission serve us? And so, you know, going out into the community instead of versus, you know, saying, hey, community, come to us. Thinking about, I was proposing or have some thoughts around maybe, again, creating some subcommittees or another subcommittee that can have these intentional conversations within each district. And then that way, we're able to learn what is happening in those districts. And, and, and they, they have a face to go along with the, the name Human Relations Commission. And so any, I know we don't have emails, but I'm in the community. I know many of us are in the community and are willing to present maybe our personal emails or something to, that would allow us to, I don't want to say personal, but work emails. Because I know myself and Mel, we're, we're in the community that they have touchpoints on what those needs are and what questions they have and what they need answers to. In addition to presenting ourselves in front of the, the, how we capture that information, maybe creating some, some questions, some qualitative and quantitative questions, some, and then bring, and that way, we can get some data to understand the, what, how many folks in this district are impacted by the same or similar issue? And is that, do we see a pattern that is citywide? Or maybe just a District Three and Four issue? And so wanted to present that and see how the commission felt about positioning ourselves in front of the community.
We did something similar like that at the Waterfront Festival. Actually, we did have cards that had questions on them. And they answered them. And then I believe Flor did the data and brought back all the answers and how many did. So that, that's a great idea. I also thought of, because we talked about doing a table at the farmer's market, but going to the districts and introducing ourselves. I mean, you know, we would have to find an outlet for that, right? I mean, if there's a, something that's going on. I also talked, thought about the senior center because, you know, those are our most vulnerable. And if, if there's a possibility for us, if there's two, or if we get an ad hoc commission to maybe go there and set up a table at one of their little functions and have our brochures and have the questions like you're asking, like what you're suggesting. And, and being more visible for people. Because I understand what she's saying. I mean, I'll say, I'm a human relations commissioner. And they're like, well, what is that? And normally, I carry a brochure and then I'll give it to them because a lot of people don't know that we exist. And, you know, we, we, we're here because we are all compassionate people. And we want to do what's right for our city. So I, I think being out there more would be a better, better way to go about it. So if you can guide us and tell us the best way, then we appreciate your help.
Well, I, I think the best way is to do a lot of the homework offline and then come back with the more specific ideas. So, you know, developing a questionnaire is great. You all could come to another meeting to continue this discussion with sample questions that you want to work on. We could put that on the agenda. Or you could work on, again, deputizing an ad hoc committee with the specific task of going and creating some questionnaires and some samples for the commission to then discuss in an open meeting and vote on and add to or change. It's difficult to decide on these things sort of in the moment here. So I, I think that's the best way.
Thank you.
And I just want to just also highlight, you know, I too have that same challenge of, of turping off, but have reapplied to serve. And so one of the, the comments that I positioned during the interview is to utilize our, our council member liaison. And so understanding what, what the conversations are happening during the council meeting, what the council members are communicating about, what we're, what we're discussing here. I mean, what we know, what's happening in our city or homelessness, mental health, reform efforts, right, public safety. These are, these are three major areas that our, our city is currently sitting with at this current time. And economic development, let me not forget about that. And so I think creating some, some foundation around that to get a sense of what is I Heart doing as we, we heard from our community members, right? Because that, there's a contrast that is happening when it comes to what the community is, is experiencing versus what is reported. And that's not the first time that I myself or our organization has walked and heard. And so we want to just understand what that experience is. And so I would like to just maybe identify that as well as part of that foundational work. Yeah. And I'm willing to be a part of that process, regardless if, if, you know, I'm, I'm appointed back. And again, looking at the different districts, my office is in District Four. I'm willing to open up my office space to hold some of those conversations that, in, in District Four. I don't want to sit over here and put Boys and Girls Empowerment on block, but you know. But I know Boys and Girls Empowerment have been a strong advocate in holding those conversations with the community. And I'm sure that I can, we can have some conversations with the team in regards to maybe holding, them holding space and allowing us to be present. And I think, again, it's just making those connections with businesses or organizations in the area that are willing to host us for those conversations.
So should we do the ad hoc for that also? Caitlin?
Yeah, if you have specific tasks that you want to accomplish and have a subcommittee do, then that would be best is to deputize them for a specific task. So if that's going to be going out and speaking to business owners and looking for spaces to have community conversations, if it's going to be developing questions. You could also, without having to do a committee separately, come up with those ideas and bring them back to the group for discussion. I don't know which you think would be more productive.
I'll create some, some draft language and information. That way, I can share with the commission or, you can share with the commission.
Right, so if that's something that the commission wants to move forward for, we would go ahead and put on the agenda for next time. You know, continued discussion with a little bit more specificity to discuss, with a little bit more specificity to discuss, you know, development of a questionnaire. And then, you know, you could email all of the suggestions to Vanessa, or you could just present them in open meeting. So you could have them, you know, printed out, and we could, you know, discuss them. It sounds like we maybe want to, motion to continue this item with sort of that specific, you know, further discussion of development of a questionnaire added? Does that sound good?
With some clarity around it and what the framework would look like. I'll make a motion to continue this conversation for our next, our October meeting.
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Delia Morris, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Stahl Nash?
Yes.
Commissioner Nona Cohen Bowman? Commissioner Melvin Jones?
Yes.
And Commissioner Courtney Davis?
Yes.
Absent Delia Morris, Morgan Hannigan, and Marissa Sarafino. Motion carries unanimously. Seven C, discussion and scheduling special meetings for the commission to meet more frequently.
I think we're just gonna, we let this, we talk about it all the time, but because of staff, I mean, we've been told that, you know, maybe if something after this, maybe we can push a meeting forward. Because what would we have to do to get us to meet more?
So you could have a, you could vote to have a standing special meeting, which I think we had for a while. And then that is up to, you know, staff to be able to find space and work that out. So I believe that was what we wanted to, what you wanted to talk about this time, was whether there was interest in scheduling a standing special meeting going forward.
The only reason I ask that is because I do not know if the city's going to have a Unity Day, and if we would be able to have a table there and, you know, maybe get some information, like having the questions that she might devise by then. So maybe we could get a meeting for, let's see, it would be September. Usually, it's in September, so. I know, I know.
I'm wondering if it makes sense to, you know, I know we, ever since I've been on this commission, that has been a thing. I feel like it's not, we really can't make it stick, because we really didn't have any clear direction on the conversations that we needed to have, have some conversations on. So I think, you know, we, once we, I think we're moving today with regard to creating these subcommittees and moving forward with some of the, like, two of the biggest challenges our city is sitting with. I think it may be helpful, we look at what do standing special meetings look like in 2026, considering that October is our final meeting of the year? I just wanted to just maybe see what that feels like for other commissioners.
Well, the Waterfront Festival is the first weekend in October. So I had the table last year, I think it was last year, yeah, last year. So I don't know, would we have to set that up now for us to have a table down at the Waterfront Festival if we don't have a special meeting in September?
So it's not on the agenda, so discussing and voting on, you know, attending wouldn't be something we would do today. But if there's interest, your secretary could go and look at availability of a table at those events, and then could see if the commission was interested in trying to have a special meeting in August or September, if there's availability for you all at that time. And then you could work that out then.
Can we do that, please? Thank you.
So is that a motion to see about a special meeting?
Have a special meeting in September. And see the availability for a table at the Waterfront Festival? And if we're doing Unity Day, do you know of, I haven't heard it yet. But it's in our brochure that we're supposed to be at Unity.
Do you have a motion for a special meeting in September?
Motion for special meetings in September.
Second that motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Vice Chair Stahl Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Nona Cohen Bowman?
Aye.
Commissioner Melvin Jones?
Yes.
And Commissioner Courtney Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously with Delia Morris absent, Morgan Hannigan absent, and Marissa Sarafino absent.
And then we'll just ask the secretary if there's not going to be availability for a table at either of those events to let you all know ahead of time, so that, you know, perhaps you don't have to meet for a special meeting, only to learn that there's no availability.
Thank you.
Future agenda items, item eight. Presentation by First Responders Transformation, How to Envision First Responders' Roles in the Community.
I do not have a presentation, and I apologize for that, and I can actually, it's been, it's been world, it's been a whirlwind for me. But I can just speak on some of the elements that we're taking out of those three discussions. And so, back in 2023, I think it was October, we held a mock session with the community, which was well-attended. I think we had about, maybe 10 to 15 people, 10 people, 15 people who attended that mock session, which was held in North Vallejo, with three remaining sessions that followed in 2024, two in English, one in Spanish. I unfortunately was not able to attend the Spanish one, but, because I was sick, I was on a, I was ill. But some of the information, and so, again, let me just give some context. And so, our organization or have been working with a statewide advocacy group called Public Health Advocates. And so, they work with several CBOs throughout the state in regards to transforming first response. And what that looks like is looking at alternative response models, like mobile crisis, like we have here in Vallejo with I-Hart. And there's five different modalities that exist here in Solano County. And they all serve its different function and purpose. And so, with the conversation being centered here in Vallejo, met with several individuals in the community, various demographics from age, race, gender, sexual, sexual identity that participated in these conversations. And so, let me just pull it up, sorry. So some of the responses, for example, so each community, each group was presented with three, three or four different scenarios. And these were real-life scenarios that were positioned in front of the group. And in those scenarios, the question was asked, what would you, how would you want your response to look like? Would you want fire? Would you want law enforcement? Would you like, would you want a paramedic? Or would you want alternative? Or would you want none? And why? We also, our team, which also involves researchers, provided education around the costs, the costs associated with some of our first responders. And so, our fire and medic, when it comes to, I'm sorry, fire and law enforcement, it comes to the costs associated with taxpayers. And then here in our county, you know, medic ambulance, they have to go through a contract bid in order to service our county. And so, you know, if you're having a, if you're needing transport through ambulance, sometimes you get that bill in the mail, right? So that's a cost associated to the individual who's needing services. And so, we landed some education, so we landed some discussion and education around that. And again, asking the community in regards to their lived experience. Individuals, for example, have quoted, like, if they ever had to utilize 911 and call dispatch, what would that look like? You know, some quotes that came out of the data was around, people haven't utilized those services, because they don't want to have any interactions with law enforcement. There's also to a gap in education, because they don't, they don't understand how to communicate with our first responders. And so, that could lead to the reasons why of not engaging, also to the fear of engaging with some of our first responders. Let's see, even just, even experiencing, whether you experiencing directly, or maybe experiencing, or you see it on television. One individual said, like, I've seen it on TV, and so, I don't want what happened on a newscast to happen to me if I respond in this way. So some of those, some of that information, or those lived experiences came out. Let's see. Others had spoke of their experiences with having either family members, children who have mental health diagnosis, or maybe be autistic, and what those behaviors look like for their, for their loved one when they're in crisis, and what they would like the outcomes to look like should a response be needed. Let's see. We also had conversation around the tools that responders come with. And so, for example, fire, fire comes with, you know, we look at it from, you know, they come with the engines, the fire trucks, and then you have the ax and the jaws of life, right? Is that, is fire a necessary response when the person that needs the service is not experiencing anything that would require those types of tools? Right? And so, we had to think about what type of response would you want? Sorry. We also asked questions around safety. What does safety look like for you as an individual? And that answer was varied amongst, whether, you know, varied amongst race, varied amongst gender, very amongst those who are presenting with any kind of diagnosis or a medical challenge. And so, that came up as well. Let's see. A lot of, a lot of folks, again, needed more context around the different crisis response models and how they serve. Who are the, who the responders fall under is important. And what are the challenges that our responders face when they're, when they're responding to residents in the community? Are they trained? What does that training involve? Are they going to be able to support someone who has an intellectual disability disorder? Because that comes with a different, another layer, level of training. And so, that, I just wanted to give context around that, that process. And I know I probably said it before, we'll have more of a structured and a presentation around these discussions, for which will help shape what response looks like and strengthen.
So I want to, before we adjourn, I want to thank you for that great report, because it's very interesting, because there is so many different folds to responders. About the tour for the Navigation Center, as Matulik said, that we could see if maybe we could go as a group, if that's something that you can find out for us. Yeah, yeah, right.
I'll add figuring that out to my to-do list, what the best way to accomplish that is.
Go in twos. And then we talked about I-Hart, maybe doing a presentation or putting them on the agenda.
I would say if y'all let me know, like, what exactly y'all, or that we looking for from, I could go talk to them. I have a pretty good relationship with a few of them over there.
Can we go about getting I-Hart here to do a presentation? Do we put it on the agenda?
Yeah, so if that's, if you want to start that agendize-to-agendize process, if there's...
That's why I thought we'd start now.
You can go ahead and do that, and then we can put that on for a vote at the next meeting.
So I agendize-to-agendize.
I was saying, once we get the, once y'all know what y'all want me to ask them, I could go over there and talk to them. And then for the, for the trainings, we could also probably delegate it with them, right?
Right, because we'd like them to, the process, there's been several different issues, as Courtney said and Joe said, with I-Hart, because they're under contract. So we want to, you know, know what they do and what their services are and what they're giving to the city.
I think one of the things, I mean, again, the creation of that subcommittee that you, that was just formed, that can be an area where I-Hart just speaks on what Joey spoke of earlier with regards to their connection to the navigation, how, what is their process when they make that first touchpoint with individuals and, mm-hmm.
And on that note, I motion to adjourn.
Got a second?
Second that.
All right. Meeting is adjourned at 7:27.
Aye. Thanks for a great meeting, everybody. It was really good. It was inspiring.